It's officially 5:30 in Franklin, North Carolina. This is a special call town board meeting to hear presentation from DFI and Allwood Health Trust. And I'll ask our town manager, if she would, to give us a brief overview and we'll start the program.
Thank you Mayor, but actually I will defer to Vice Mayor Goffey to give us an overview.
Oh, Mr. Goffey, okay, yeah, I'll see him now. Mr. Goffey, can you hear us okay? You're muted.
There we go.
Now we can hear you.
I can barely hear you, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Let me turn it up some, Justin.
Stacy, could you hear my comment? Obviously not.
Stacy, I'll work on getting the microphone to give you an overview of what the meeting's about.
The problem with the idea is that we've talked a few times now about the potential of using some of the property that we currently own and probably that we may own in the future for potential sites for affordable or workforce housing or other kind of development that would be beneficial to the town of Franklin. I think it's important to have this conversation with DFI because they have experience in developing the kind of plans that we want to develop around these properties and I thought it would be good for us to get some expertise sort of looking towards the day when we might, for example, take a portion of, let's say, the Wimmer property that we set aside with the potential for housing, if we wanted to create a development plan for that particular piece of property and then sell it to a developer encumbered with a covenant or some other instrument that would convey it with that development plan as a requirement so that we have the kind of outcome that we're looking for in terms of development in Franklin. So I thought it would be good to be on the same page with that and also to have a grant funder in the room to talk about potential grant funding for such a project and that way we have the facts.
Okay.
Stacy, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, I think there was a question, could you...
Justin's working on it.
Justin's working on it, we just had a question about sharing screen sharing. I think Justin's trying to work on that now, so if anybody can make it happen, Justin can do it.
There you go.
So let's go ahead and Stacy, who do we want to speak first?
I'm going to let Rory Dowling take it from here from the Development Finance Initiative.
Great, thank you Stacy, I appreciate that. Great to see everybody, sorry we can't be there in person, been a long ride, we still had a high note last week, so couldn't make it out there in person, but hope to be out there and get you all something. I was introduced to Stacy, Stacy, maybe two or three months ago through another project and when he reached out talking about what you all are thinking of on the affordable housing side, he sounded like a really good fit for what we do, our Development Finance Initiative, and yeah, invited us to speak to you all. My name is Rory Dowling, I'm a development advisor with DFI at UNC School of Government and I've got Sarah Odeo, Director of Affordable Housing with DFI. So yeah, sure, glad to be here. I'm going to start with a little bit of background on DFI, on the Finance Initiative, which I think you all are obviously aware of UNC School of Government, at least I hope you are, but the School of Government, the largest university-based local training advisory research organization in the country, and I know you all are members of the School of Government and so I'm sure you have probably extensive experience picking up the phone and calling the great staff over there to assist in helping you all do your job better. Essentially, the origin of School of Government is to help local governments really achieve their jobs as best they can. About 12 years ago, our Tyler Ligon, you may be familiar with, who was our initial executive director, started getting more and more calls that revolved around real estate development and how can the local governments make smart investments with these public private partnerships. And at the time, Tyler could advise on the legal side of these problems and sort of advise on how to structure these agreements and public private partnerships, but he couldn't really get the root of, is it a good investment and how should we structure this investment to maximize ROI for the town, for the county? And so he had the idea of forming a team of real estate development experts that could respond to that challenge, that could take a look at a vacant historic building or a brownfield site or a case of needed affordable housing and figure out how to layer in that public investment that was needed to make the project financially feasible, but also do it in a way that was a smart investment on behalf of the local government. And so flash forward 12 years and that's who we are. We work clearly here across the state of North Carolina, even a little bit in the state of Virginia and South Carolina, but predominantly North Carolina, and we are here to help local governments attract that private investment for those difficult types of projects that really need that specialized real estate development expertise. And so that's what our team is, is made up of these real estate development experts to address those issues. You can see here just sort of a map that zeroes in on affordable housing work that we've done, also spanning pretty much the entire state. And Sarah's going to talk about a few of those projects that are really mainly were in Buckland County here in a second, but it is by far the fastest growing element of our work, affordable housing. I'd say Sarah probably one in two projects that we start that over the past year have been, at least had an affordable housing component because it is greatly needed. I know you all see it being in the tourist community, or tourism community, and it's everywhere you look, there is a problem. So that's been the fastest growing element of our work. I'd like to show this slide just to sort of indicate why there's a need for DFI and so we'd like to sort of explain through the private development process, the private predevelopment process. So any developer is going to go through this sort of simplified version of the real estate development process, starting with an idea and then trying to get site control and then going through an extensive predevelopment feasibility to test the financial feasibility based on market conditions and any sort of site constraints that are there before they start to really put together their partnership program and then going out and forming their ownership entity and then designing and getting the project entitled. What's really important to note here is that the majority of the risk for this development process is on the front end, right, during that feasibility analysis. That's when you really are able to determine whether the project is feasible. It's not until the very end, until the entitlement process is when the local government typically gets involved and it says, puts their stamp of approval, whether it's the zoning side of things, and then that's typically when local governments get involved. What we like to do is try to get the local governments involved from the front end when there is that element of high risk during that feasibility analysis period, to assist private developers to essentially de-risk these projects and try to minimize the amount of risk so that they know what sort of feasible path is there and also so that they know what is going to be approved at the local level once it becomes time to get that formal stamp of approval. And so we focus a lot of our work on that predevelopment phase, which is where we know that the majority of the risk lies.
And so I'll jump in to really dive into services, sorry. So I am the Associate Director for Housing and I know that, I'm Sarah Odeo, and I know that because I am the first. And I'm going to reiterate what Rory has said, which is in the last few years, you know, affordable housing has really become one of the top needs for communities. And so we have developed our services and really taken what we do everywhere. So anything I describe today is done for any property type, but we really have kind of honed down how to make housing at the different income levels really work for communities. And so upfront, when you are at that phase where you're just thinking about ideas, and an idea can be something as civilized, you know, how do we flush out what kind of housing we want to do, or do we want to do mixed use, right? We're not just interested in housing, we're interested in other elements of development. Sometimes an idea is really just around, we have a building, that building itself has inspired us to do something, what can we do with that building that can help us meet our housing needs and maybe other needs as well. And so for communities that are really new to thinking about affordable housing and kind of in that idea formation things, we help with affordable housing workshops, we can do housing needs assessment as part of that to help you really narrow in on who and what is needed in your community. Now, we get a lot deeper when it comes to really identifying sites. So that is where a lot of that local government and power and control in development comes from, from having control of property in your community. And so we can help you identify sites that meet your local goals, that really help fulfill your idea for development of a certain kind. And then from there, once a site is identified, once a community has site control, we can actually go out and help support you all as you really assess the feasibility, figure out what kind of project you all would be willing and able to support, and then most critically, we help you go out and find a private development partner who will pick up the ball basically and run with it. And you are mitigating, as Rory said, a lot of the risk that they would normally face, but you're also, and most importantly, ensuring that what you want to see in your area and in your community is what is happening through development. So it's that control and drive in maintaining their local housing or other development goals. So when we think about, and I'll dig in a little bit more about what the opportunity site identification process looks like with DFI, we start off with stakeholder engagement. Every community is different, they might think of it a little bit differently. Some communities want to go big and really talk to as many people as they can to really get a sense of, hey, what do we want to do here? And so we will sometimes just have small listening sessions with neighbors and community members to inform the counties, and in this case, with Buckland County sites, since we're going to another scope, the counties that raise for future affordable housing development. With the housing needs assessment, this is where we determine the demand for different housing types based on your current economic drivers and housing supply. So we'll actually dig into the local data and we'll figure out, okay, what are your needs here? And we try to put a number on it so that you have a sense of what your goals should be. We then look at different sites, right? Based on your need, based on your local priorities, we will go out and identify sites that meet the county or the towns' priorities for future affordable housing development, or whatever kind of development maybe you might want, right? So we are going out there and we are saying, okay, you want to do rental, let's look at this funding source, and you want to do it in these areas, okay, let's dig in here, let's match that with the funding source, and let's look at the developability, townwide anyways, for each of these sites and figure out what are your options, what are actual physical sites and options for development. And then for each site identified that are priority sites, we'll actually dig in a little bit deeper and we will give you a sense of the type and scale of development that is possible on each site. So you're not just making a decision blindly, hey, we like this building or we like this location, you're informed of what is possible on this site before you make a decision as big as, hey, we want to develop this site. There is a Phase Two potential, right? Even after a site is identified, where you can dig even deeper into a specific site and at that point, DFI can help you go out and find a development partner. And so to really reiterate what I said here, you know, the goal of our analysis is to get to a feasible public private partnership. We are not about drawing pretty pictures and putting them on board and leaving that on your desk. We want to make sure that whatever you want to find and resources you're investing in digging into a site and moving it forward, that at the end of that, you will be able to attract a private partner to finance it and develop it on your behalf and ensure that you're meeting the public interests through that process. So I'm going to give you, I don't know Rory, can I jump in on any of that?
No, I just wondered, I mean, I wanted, I meant to tell that earlier, but that is a big part of our process is making sure that we are on your side of the tables throughout. And once that private development partner is identified, we're there with you until there are shovels in the ground, quite literally. And so, you know, a lot of consultants will sort of give you a plan, say, here you go, good luck, but we are only successful, you all are successful in getting that private development partner and getting that development agreement in place and then shovels in the ground. You know, we can often, we can take 36 months plus, but hopefully not, because that has the length of our engagement. I just wanted to hit on that a little bit more.
So I'm going to give you a quick case study to have a sense of what this looks like. This is a Buckland County case study. We started off, and when we start off, we did the housing needs assessment, you know, they have great need in Buckland County, and our primary focus was on county-owned properties that had previously been identified as a priority by staff, and I'll also say by the board, right? And so people saying, hey, what about this site, or we own this, can we look at that? And so we looked at every single site that was identified through kind of, hey, gut, right, we would love to see these sites work. We also do a secondary search in Buckland County, we did a greater search of the entire county for additional sites that would be suitable for a funding source, which is the low-income housing tax credit. And we looked at everything from vacant county-owned properties to redevelopment opportunities that are county-owned, through to privately owned sites that had a path to site control, as we say. So maybe they're on the market or somebody knows the owner and the owner would potentially be interested in conveying it or a specific use. So we really get deep into this. We're not just going to be like, oh, here are three sites, okay, we're done. We go as deep as we can to try to find you the best possible opportunities. So in Buckland County, we dug deep, we looked countywide, we found county-owned potential sites all across the county, and we also found vacant, public or privately owned potential sites that could compete for a different level of tax credit. We narrowed it, and these are actually just three, but I just pulled these up to give you an idea. So we had in downtown, just our first pool, there were three sites, and we were able to work with our in-house architect, the land tenant architect, he does kind of test fits, and we're able to see what is, is there a minimum? In some cases, sometimes we have a maximum, right? Sometimes you can max out, in some cases, we're working on a minimum so that we can try to reduce the funding cap. So we had a couple of different sites, one site could give us 80 units, another site could give us 150 units, one could give us 180 units, but the funding cap per unit would be much higher for each of those units, right? And so we were able to give the county this information and they could make a decision and say, okay, well, it's most important to us that we get as many units as possible. We're looking at site one that has this minimum, yes, it's lower, but we don't just give you the details about the number of units or funding cap, we give you all the details about the potential of the site, what are your opportunities, what are your challenges? And so we dig into site one and we could see that if we were really to combine a couple of different parcels, that they could actually hit 200 units at 40,000 per unit. And so we give them all the detail, they decided to proceed actually with two of these three sites, seeing an opportunity in two of them. I'll look forward to this one, which is, that was the opportunity site ID process, here are some options, let's proceed with these. We then went to that full predevelopment process and the county is actually currently considering multiple options for this site, right? They went from, here's some high-level information about what's possible, and then Phase Two Predevelopment, we just dug deep in, we worked with an architect local to Buckland County, and we looked at all the possible options for this site. And next up, they're doing community engagement to figure out how would the community like to proceed, and the county will then go out and make a preferred plan and identify a private development partner. So this is an example of how that offset ID can play out and what it can lead to. We have projects all across the state, Durham County is one other example where the buildings are, I'm going to put the pictures here, the buildings are under construction at this point, we have projects in Lumberton that are actually out that have been fully built and are now occupied. Across the state, there are just examples of communities going through this process, starting with a piece of land, an idea of building, and bringing development to the table. So I'm going to pause there, any questions, and then I'm going to hand this back to Rory to think about site and your town and what you see as opportunities there.
Do you pre-qualify potential developers? Is there any way to do that, or is that necessary?
To pre-qualify a developer?
Here, developers, when you go to that part where you're selecting a developer for a particular project, how do you go about selecting a particular developer? Is it based on qualifications, price, or do you have any kind of criteria that you use to pick out the person who's going to do the best job or the company's going to do the best job for the project that you're trying to create?
Rory, that's a great question because it gets to, I think, the great value curve, which is we help you target the exact type of developer that could take on the exact type of development that you want to see done. So we're taking what is a large universe of developers and saying, if you want to do something, and you're saying, we want to do this, show us that you have the exact experience to be able to pull off this kind of project.
So we target those types of developers and then hold them back in once we get proposals submitted, and we actually go through an extensive check and references, making sure that we've actually done what they said they've done, and then we present all that, those findings to staff and then to you all for you all to make, you know, make your decision in front of the group of people.
Okay.
In all of these projects that you've been working on over the past few years, have they all had like HUD funding or funding that would help with low, for low-income people to be able to afford rent or housing? I mean, do they all have a public funding mechanism?
I would say that all of our projects lead with trying to maximize all of those private sources, and I will count the low-income housing tax credit as a private source because those are private investors that are actually buying these tax credits. And so we lead with that, first, let's max out all of the other funding sources out there, and then we go to the local government, we say, okay, well, it looks like you have these options, maxing out private sources, this is what you might have to contribute to get this plan, here's what you have to contribute to get this plan. So we try to first go private, then we think about local government participation.
So what about projects for families that maybe don't make enough money to be able to procure a mortgage, but make too much money to qualify for low-income housing? Have you done anything like that?
Sort of the middle income? You know, we have been working with a couple of communities and we're working with them right now that are interested in that space. I'll say one of the challenges for local government in North Carolina is that you're very, you're limited in how you can participate in developments that are serving households earning more than 80% of the area median income. Now, for most communities that are, those are your teachers that earn 80% of your area median income, so you can assist teachers and buyer fighters. When you start moving up on the income scale, it becomes more difficult for you as a local government to be able to do that, and that's where, you know, your tools on zoning are more effective than a process like this that does require you all to participate in a, within your legal, you know, statutory authority.
Say that again, they have to make less than 80% of the area's income for a public institution to help, like a county or a town?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
There's a lot more nuance to it, but that's the basic rule to think about.
Am I correct, if we had a piece of property large enough where we could have, you know, mixed use, some commercial, some residential, and within that residential have some that is low-income, certainly low-income population, and then housing that's set aside, you know, the developer to build that is market rated or below market rate, in other words, a mix of affordability?
Yes, it's possible as long as those units don't end up needing subsidy, and it would surprise you, right, if your incomes aren't high enough and the rents aren't high enough. You know, you could have a unit that has rents as high as, let's say, 1,600 per month, which sounds so high, but where construction costs are today, there would still be a gap in order to fund that. And so if not, you know, that's one of the things actually we've been working with some of our partners with, which is if it's not you as a local government, then who? Right? So one thing as a government you can do is help identify other partners that can fund that space. You all are still restricted in who you can, how you can sell the property for market rate housing versus affordable housing, but in terms of that subsidy, you could find or help facilitate finding another partner that could fill that at that higher income level. But it would surprise you how high rents can go and still the numbers not actually work with where it's so expensive today to build. You know, the debt is expensive and materials are expensive, labor is expensive, so it's a tough environment.
To do this project that's laid out, finding sites, going through the process, the steps that you talked about, takes quite a bit of time, I'm sure, and some money. How is it paid for? Is it paid for by the local unit of government, or is there other funds to pay for the cost of doing this?
Yeah, so typically we take an upfront administrative fee for the work that we do. If we just did the opportunity site ID, sort of that Phase One scope of work, local government would cover the full cost of the work that we do. When we do our full predevelopment process, which is sort of that Phase Two, the majority of our fee is paid for by the project, by the developer holding back in once we're successful, so that we're sort of aligning our risks, our interests with you all, and we're only paid if we're successful in bringing you the right partner.
Okay.
Of the number of communities, counties, or towns that you've worked with, what percent or how many of them would you say move forward? or how many of them would you say move forward?
With development?
Yeah.
That's a good question. Sarah, maybe you speak typically to the affordable housing side.
Yeah. I, I think it depends at what point they hire us for, right? So sometimes we have communities that are engaging us for, you know, the housing workshop. And I still believe they will move forward if it's a longer timeline. If they hire us for a specific site or development, am I lying? Can I say 100%? Or like, oh, if they have a site identified for affordable housing development from the outset?
I was going to say 75%, but I'm trying to think of one that did not.
Trying to think of one where we had a site that didn't proceed to a project.
Is that one in, um, Panyo, that doesn't really count?
Yes, they're counting, yes. So 75, 80% for projects, yeah. That was more of a town that, it was a town county situation. The county wanted to do a project that town did not want it to have. So I don't know anything about town Franklin yet, but we'll learn.
Yeah, no, I'll say also the affordable housing, if there are reasons why it doesn't happen, it's typically due to some sort of, the nature of affordable housing and, and something getting in the way on, on that. And which, which unfortunately happens.
Thank you.
Could it be possible to pull Sarah Brown's name out?
Yeah, so I would invite Sarah Brown, who is the Vice President of Impact for Housing at Dogwood Health Trust. We speculate a lot about what grant funding might pay for or might not pay for. So I thought it would be good to, to hear from an expert. Thanks for being here, Sarah.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, so I was excited when Amy and Stacy reached out to invite me to have a conversation with you all about housing. We really enjoyed, I've been with Dogwood three years, I'm a local to western North Carolina. And I've just, the strides that the region is making in housing in a very thoughtful way has just been very enjoyable to participate with you all. We were, I mean, Amy asked us for a grant to look at Angel Medical Center, gosh, probably two years ago. That was a feasibility study that didn't pan out the way that we thought it might be able to. But Dogwood really believes in looking at things from the beginning. A really thoughtful project coming with local support, with a vision of the people who live in the community. It's just, it's, it's where we want to put our dollars. We want to put thoughtful dollars into the community for community-led efforts to move forward with housing needs and then other projects that fit in with our, the other social determinants of health that we support. And health and wellness, education, economic opportunity. So we're not looking at just the housing needed to invest in, but what is best for that child, family, or individual who is living in that home. So as far as what, you know, the land or people fund, specific to Dogwood, in the past, we've looked at, you know, things from just day one. So the feasibility study that Sarah was talking about, or even a plan to get started in housing initiatives. There's a lot of different things that stakeholders can bring to the table. So when we work with community, we typically talk to, you know, the town manager, the county manager, different stakeholders in the community, nonprofits that are in your area. So when we fund, we will fund directly to a nonprofit, a county municipality. And for Dogwood, we like to, well, we do everything that we can to fund developers who are specifically located in western North Carolina or have strong ties to western North Carolina. As we know, some of these initiatives have income and we would love to see that put back into the community. So even there may be a general contractor who you're working with that would be out of state, but are we hiring local subcontractors and things like that. So in, I will say as far as specific to Macon County, in 2022, we funded basically stakeholder feasibility needs assessment for the county. And I believe they've hired, go and research to get started on that. So I know that will be something that's going on this year. And they'll be reaching out for different stakeholder meetings and to put together housing needs assessment and hopefully develop a plan, an action plan for hypothetical housing. So I think what we fund as Dogwood today has been pretty vague because every community is different. Every county is different, but then it can be that specific town that has different needs than the rest of the county. So we will participate from day one, looking at just identifying what the issue is, all the way up to funding a feasibility study for a full county or county-owned property. We're just looking at available property that might be able to be used for development. We do participate, or we have in the past participated for some acquisition of land and different gap funding opportunities for nonprofits in the region. But we like to work directly with our counties and municipalities and nonprofits because everybody getting together can bring something different to the table. And Sarah touched on it a little bit, but, you know, zoning is something, or allowances of projects. If it's not something that is coming from a community-led effort, it's a surprise to the community. And that may not be their vision for the community. I know probably Sarah or you'll touch on it, but I know a lot of your projects tend to be bigger. And at Dogwood, we look at everything from helping leverage dollars for people to keep, to hold on to their home, reserving that generational wealth. So we'll look at anything from home repair programs over to larger developments. But again, we listen to the community and it's that community-led effort is where we want to put the dollars for that vision. So single-family homes, it doesn't have to be on a large scale, scale where we participate.
Sarah, I was talking to-
Anything else you want to need to touch on?
Yeah, I was, I was talking to a friend of mine who's the county manager over in Avery County, Philip Barrier.
Philip Barrier.
And I think you told me that y'all worked with them on doing a housing study. Is that right? Or, and actually, I think he showed me a copy of it. I don't have it with me. But is that something that y'all worked on with Avery County in the last couple of years?
We did. Philip actually started the process with as far as the initial granting in 2021. And now they're to the point where they're really trying to make a plan to identify their next steps.
Okay.
Yeah, we've worked with kind of few counties in the region. That's why I'm excited for this conversation because I know Macon is just getting started and hopefully Franklin will have a lot of input in that study.
Right.
Neighborhood revitalization, have you all ever funded anything along those lines?
We have. We have two developments that are pretty far down the line. We partnered with the town of Spindale and the town of Rutherfordton. Many, many players came to the table to look at that. But it was really almost a door-to-door effort to identify the needs in a community everywhere from lighted housing to infill lots, different things like that. Spindale did it very differently from Rutherfordton, but it was, again, this town manager is really getting involved in reaching out to see what the needs of the community were.
Our manager, you have a question?
I do. More of a statement, actually. Part of the reason, again, that Sarah Brown is included in this conversation is they know who all the stakeholders are. Dogwood Health has been instrumental throughout the region in being inclusive in thinking of groups and stakeholders that maybe we didn't think of. The grant cycle has closed for this year, so this would not be something that we could approach them about funding at this point. So we will keep watch on when they actually do open the grant cycles again and what particular requirements there may be for the application. But I felt like it was important that all of us who are here today understand that there is work going on from a feasibility standpoint for Macon County as a whole. So some of the information is being collected currently. We just want to have the opportunity to participate in that. And also the town council's goals were to see what we could do as a municipality to move this affordable housing opportunities forward. So that's why we're all involved in this conversation.
Amy, I'll just add too that having Dogwood at the table, if, if we have pieces of the project where we're looking for funding, obviously Sarah and the other folks at Dogwood are going to know other funders too. So they can help us identify other sources of funding potentially.
And I, I do want to clarify something on why I'm excited that Sarah just talked about kind of the different things they fund. Yet if I, we, you know, we came talking about kind of bigger projects here, but I actually have a proposal out to Spindale right now that they requested for neighborhood revitalization, which is a lot of our work as well, which is we look at scattered site opportunities because not all places have either the opportunity for larger scale development or the desire for larger scale development. And maybe they have a large kind of supply of vacant or underutilized properties they would like to put back into productive use. And so we do, they were advancing strategies all across the state. We've done land banking strategies for some communities, that's a big one, so. But we are kind of, I think the most important thing to know about the process is that we react to the needs of local communities. And we try to help you bring private, so everything we do is public-private. We try to help you bring private dollars to the table to help you meet all of those development goals. That may include preservation as well.
Talk a little bit about what tools are available for county and municipality whenever it comes to pulling a project together. I mean, can you low-ball utilities? Can you give land? Can you, what are some of the tax abatements? What are some of the tools in the toolbox? This is, this is for anybody who knows, who wants to talk about it.
I, I didn't hear that last piece.
I mean, this, this could be for you or anyone else on the, Roy, or anybody who would talk to us about it.
Yeah, I mean, if you are interested generally in all the tools, at the School of Government, Calhoun is the expert on community and economic development and all of those tools that are available. From our point of view, you know, we really look at it from the tools associated with land and site control and what you're able to do in those situations, right? And so we think of it from the Economic Development Authority to move things forward. We think of it from your affordable housing authority and the ability to make a private sale and to pick a partner who's going to do what it is that you want them to do versus having to sell a property through a competitive bid process. And you lose some of that control of what is possible. But there is, you have a large toolbox when it comes to community development. The goal is finding out kind of what is it that you're trying to achieve and what is the best tool or the thing you are trying to achieve. So a lot of vacant and abandoned properties, which I touched on before, that's a different approach where you're thinking about kind of acquiring, stabilizing, and potentially putting back into productive use and selling at open bid because you just want it to be used, right? So that is a three-day, how many day course does Tyler teach on that?
Yeah.
A four-day course on all of those tools that you have, depending on what it is that you're hoping to achieve through development.
I'll throw this out for my Vice Mayor, Mr. Guffey there. Stacy, are you aware if we have an inventory on currently owned property or potential properties that might be suitable for some of these housing projects? Do we have already inventories? Is that something that we need to start putting together?
We know that the county is currently conducting an inventory. I would assume that some of those, I assume that some of those properties are going to be within the city limits. So I would think that's a good thing for us to partner with the county on, in their housing state.
Is the grantee on that, Stacy, is that Macon Program for Progress for this area?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
I said, is the Macon Program for Progress, the grantee on that Dogwood and the study that we're talking about, that the county's doing?
That's the county housing authority, John Fay-
Okay.
Is the director there.
Okay.
Sarah, that project in Spindale looks like it's Habitat for Humanity's involved in that. Is that correct?
Uh, they are, yes. And the two nonprofits involved are Owen, Sarah O'Geehan, that may have been to you.
Either one of them.
Yeah, no, it's a Habitat for Humanity, it's local developers, another Rutherford Housing Partnership. The neat thing about Spindale is if a house can be saved, Rutherford Housing Partnership will buy it and keep it affordable and keep continuing to rent it. If it has a homeowner in the home, they are eligible for home repairs most of the time. If the house can't be saved, then it's torn down and the Habitat builds new in its place. But there's also just a natural progression of developers buying their homes or families fixing up their long-term homes. It's, there's some that's purposely spurred and then things that are just happening.
Interesting. Especially involving local contractors.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Anyone else have a question?
I have one more follow-up question. The question that Joe asked about tools, and this is for Sarah O'Geehan and Roy. Do you, do you see that most communities use some sort of available incentive, an incentive that we just always have available in North Carolina to make these projects work for the developer?
I'm not sure what you mean by incentive, I guess.
So tap fees, reduce cost of property, et cetera, those kinds of things?
Yeah, I mean, I also, we see communities use them wherever possible, right? There are a lot of kind of little ins and outs of it. Don't mess with property taxes, that sort of things can get really messy. But ultimately, I think the reality is that those really, you know, chip out a small chunk of what it takes to make affordable housing work. So most city communities we work with will try to take a hold of you. So there are all the ways that we can save money for these projects so that they can work. But ultimately, it's what is that additional subsidy that we may need to raise to make this work? You know, we're often operating in, it's not $50,000, which is what, or $200,000. Sometimes we're, we're deep into the millions to, to really make bigger projects work. And sometimes when you go to a house by house, you're talking about 75,000, 100,000, maybe more to make each home work. And so the scale of investment is sometimes a lot bigger than those smaller tools that communities usually focus on.
Anyone else? We do certainly thank you for your time, for the information. And it sounds like it's a, this is a marathon-type project. This is not a sprint. There's a lot of work that has to be done. And we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of work ahead of us to even get started in the right direction. But it's good to know that we have resources from the School of Government and from Dogwood to help us to try to meet this growing need here in Franklin and Macon County. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate you all's time. Please don't hesitate to follow up. Any questions that are all talking, decided it's something you all are interested in working with us, we'd be happy to put together a proposal. Now I can follow up with Stacy. But yeah, we really appreciate you all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Anything else? If not, this was the only- If not, this was the only purpose that we were reading for tonight.
I do have one announcement that I need to share with the council is if you have an RSVP to the donor reception that will be on March the 22nd through the Folk Heritage Association of Macon County, i.e. Women's History Trail, please do so. They need to finish their planning so they can get that reception taken care of.
Very good. They're working away. Looks good. Looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Yep.
If there's nothing else--
Oh, one more thing.
Yes, Mr. Lewis.
I'll be here next Monday for the meeting. I've got to go to pay my daughter to App State for something that they're, she's meeting a roommate and they're having some sort of, you know, whatever.
Hey, family first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Stand in motion.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Collins. We have a second, Ms. Lane?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion second. Any discussion? Here none. We will vote on the motion. All in favor, please say the five, or raise your hand, and you vote the like sign. Motion carries. We will stand adjourn until Monday. Thank you.